Six twenty-nine. Is it just me, or are we shy of few people?
We are still waiting for Councilmember Piti Samanu and Councilmember Nordfeldt. Councilmember Ling will not be here.
We can do what we want. All right. Well, good evening. Welcome, everyone, to the regular meeting in the West Valley City Council. We note that we do have a quorum present. We have four council members, five council members in attendance. Councilwoman Lang is excused, and I believe Councilman Nordfeld will join us shortly. But with that, then, we'll go ahead and get started with our regular Police Department video, the next one in the series that we've been watching. Are we ready with that? We are, it looks like. Thank you.
It has all the makings of a potentially tragic encounter. A man wandering through the streets, behaving angrily, swinging swords.
He took his swords and was walking around. It was at night, and he was loud, almost like a drunk. Except he wasn't drunk, he was just really wound up.
People got scared.
I mean, it's really late at night, who's this crazy person walking around? You know, a little frightened.
And police got called.
I mean, so easily could have gone the wrong way, you know.
The man in this case is Julie Steinkie's son, Nathan.
By the time I got there, they had him sitting down and just chatting away with him, talking about he loves Legos and hot cars, hot wheels.
Nathan is autistic. His swords, just realistic-looking toys. A misunderstanding, but Nathan is often misunderstood, and as a result, has had multiple encounters with police. Thanks to the West Valley City Police Special Need Safety Program, these encounters have resulted in positive outcomes.
They come and visit to get to know Nathan and get to know us. And we kind of, we give them some feedback as to what helps calm him down, what gathers his interest to kind of deflect him from his anger or destructive issues.
I'm Sergeant Ammon Fox. I am a sergeant with our Investigations Unit, and I also work with our Crisis Intervention Team.
The Crisis Intervention, or CIT, team, consists of officers who are specially trained in mental health disorders, aging disorders, and autism spectrum disorders.
Every officer in the department receives at minimum forty hours of training. Our Crisis Intervention Officers, they receive another additional forty hours just to start, and then they get continuous ongoing training on an annual basis.
The CIT training focuses on how to recognize symptoms of mental illness, autism, and aging disorders, as well as provides de-escalation techniques for these special groups. The officers work closely with a social worker employed by the West Valley City Police Department and are trained to understand the resources available and how to help families get access.
Policing isn't just about law enforcement. When someone needs help, they call the police, and we need to respond and provide a service to them, whether their help is in need when it comes to a crime or some other service, some other crisis. We respond and we help them in any way we can.
As part of the Special Need Safety Program, a member of the Crisis Intervention Team meets with interested families, like the Steinkies. These specially-trained officers learn about an individual's specific condition and develop a uniquely tailored safety plan.
And the idea is to prevent a negative interaction. If maybe they don't respond well to certain things, or they don't respond well to officers, or to help us just have de-escalation tactics in place before a bad event.
For the Steinkies, the Special Need Safety Program has worked.
We're blessed, we're so lucky. The situations with Nathan, any of them could have ended terribly wrong.
They got big, didn't they?
You know, and this police department, West Valley Police Department, seriously, they, they knew, you know, how to interact with them.
And to respond on a call where someone's reporting that he has a weapon. If we arrive and see who it is, because of the safety plan that we've discussed with parents, we know how to talk to him. We know what things that he likes. And by talking to, talking with him about things that he likes, talking with him about his interests, it helps us de-escalate him.
Officers now know another side of Nathan. The gentle giant who loves to talk cars.
Two cannibals are sitting in a tree. One cannibal, well, a knight walks by.
And tell jokes.
One cannibal says to the other, canned food again.
We've made officers aware of who he is, and we have frequent visits with Mom in case anything changes. And we're allowed, and that allows us to make regular updates to his case so that, as things develop in his life, we're aware of them.
They care so much about him and other people that, you know, have, have these issues, you know, that it's not always something that they can control. And the police department, they don't want to hurt people, they want to help people. And this is their way of, again, making sure horrible things don't happen and doing what they can to help people out and, and get them on the right way, go the right direction.
Thank you. Great stuff. Going on down our agenda, approval of the minutes of August 11th.
Move for approval of those minutes, ma'am?
Second.
Okay, any further comments? Hearing none. The minutes will stand approved without objection. No objections, so they stand approved unanimously. Next is our comment period. Nicole, do we have some people who are listening in that are going to comment?
Yes, sir, we have two people signed up for the general public comment period. The first one is Jim Vissok. Jim, you are able to speak.
Okay, hopefully I have good internet this week. Stuff from the study meeting, the, I've been praising the police for several weeks. I will continue to praise the police. Every time when I get into conversations with the public out there, they actually think I'm PR for the police, unfortunately, or I am a police officer. I tell them, read Kalia. West Valley is so far ahead with the requirements of their police officers because of Kalia. Just that. I do understand, listening to all their things, nothing but fun cuts is what they want. Fun cuts, fun cuts. You know, it's, it's sad out there. Another thing you guys talked about in the study meeting, what was the housing cost sales? Given example, six in my neighborhood, within a two-block area, went on the market. Two of them were turnkey houses, which you could move right in. Four of them were previously rentals with major fix-up issues. All of them, within twenty-four hours, had multiple offers, and all of them sold for over thirty thousand dollars over their asking price. It is crazy. Now, I live on the west side, which, once again, is one of the higher areas, but it's crazy what our market out there is, what the fix is. I don't like all that, all those housings next to each other, but, you know, unfortunately, that's kind of the way we're going. Back on the police, you know, talking about police reform, on our, on a lot of the social media sites, Nextdoor, on some of the other West Valley private sites and stuff, people are talking about code enforcement. And instead of me being their voice, I've been sending them your guys' information as a group. But what's, what's going on out there with the few of them, and I don't know how they have the time to do this, is they're out there about dry lawns, bear spots in the lawns, and the percentage of grass to weeds that are out there. I don't understand how somebody has that time. I do understand the dry lawns, some people can't afford two hundred dollars in water. Jordan Valley is asking, you know, asking people to cut back and all this stuff. I think this, you know, it's a time to look at the, at the ordinances and maybe tweak it back a little bit on where it is on a lawn. And I challenge you guys, go out and look at your lawn and, and then look at the ordinance and see, or your yard, and see if your yard would actually pass one of these few that are out there enforcing, you know, these ridiculous standards. That's all I have tonight. Have a good evening, good to see you guys.
Thank you. Next?
Next, we have Mike Markham. Mike, you should be able to speak.
Sounds like we might have some technical difficulties.
Oh, it looks like he's now unmuted. Mike, you can go ahead.
I got you now. Just a question I have here, we're talking, spending a lot of time talking about the police department, but... Okay, thanks. Okay, now, talking about the, the police department, back on July twentieth, about three thirteen in the morning, I had a trailer stolen that was hooked right to the back of my truck with a lawnmower on it, out of my driveway. I called and the non-emergency number had to leave a message. Finally, an officer called me back. I described the trailer. I can describe it to a T because I built it. The officer told me he would be out to take care of it. To this day, thirty days later, about, I've never seen that officer to come out. I, I have, have a video of the vehicle dimming its lights, pulling in the cul-de-sac, but I've never yet seen a, an officer on that case yet whatsoever. So that's kind of discouraging that I'm told that that would be taken care of. And here's kind of counter to what Jim was just saying, but I question how aggressive we are out there with code enforcement and with parking enforcement. There's, we've got a lot of problems out there. I, because, you know, I'm the pain that I am, I've seen the code enforcement officer drive past my house. So for him to drive past my house and check me out, he's got to pass a couple of really nasty houses. So I would just like to see a little step up on that. And another note back to Jim, I, you know, my lawn, my front lawn, back lawn, is perfectly green, and I don't have a two hundred dollar water bill. I have an eighty-six dollar water bill, but I don't, I, I, I don't have a two hundred dollar water bill. So, you know, I'm just concerned about some of these things that we, I feel like we used to be aggressive about, but we're not aggressive. If somebody from the police department wants to call me, get that case number and see if anything has been done, I would appreciate it. It works out to be about an eight hundred dollar theft. So appreciate your time. Thank you, bye.
Thank you. And that's everyone?
Yes, sir, that's everyone for the general public comment period.
All right. Then we'll end the public comment period and come back to our city manager for any comments.
I'm good, mayor, thank you.
Councilmembers, any comments? Hearing none, then we'll go on to item seven on our agenda, which is our first public hearing. This is on application Z dash four twenty twenty, along with ordinance twenty dash twenty-nine. This is requesting a zone change from Agricultural to Business Research Park on property located at ten seventy-eight West Parkway Avenue. And this is a piece of ground where they are proposing to take point eight acres and change it. There's a home on it now, and they're proposing to change it to this Business Research Park category because they're, to the west, that's a business park, west and north, and then a county park also somewhat to the north. This property is currently vacant. And so there's, as I recall, a church to the south of that, and then a home on the east side, then the Jordan River. So the proposal is to rezone that. They want to put a commercial building there, a cabinet-making facility. So that is the introduction to the issue. Anything else council wants to add? If not, then we'll open it to public comments. Is there anyone online who's going, who wants to comment on this?
No, sir, there's no one here to comment on this public hearing.
Okay. Having no one to comment, then we'll bring it back to, we'll close the public comment portion and bring it back to the council for any comments or motions or whatever.
I move for approval of ordinance twenty dash twenty-nine.
Second.
Any further comments? Hearing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Piti Samanu?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Sorry, nay. No.
Councilman Hune?
No.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow?
No.
Motion fails.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue this item to next week, seeing that one other vote would change the outcome, and one of our members is missing.
Any motion at this point is appropriate, and that is a valid motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further comments? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilman Piti Samanu?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow?
Yes.
Motion for continuance passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we have another public hearing. This is on application GPC dash six twenty twenty for property at forty-five sixty-five West, thirty-five hundred South. In conjunction with that, there is ordinance twenty dash thirty, ordinance twenty dash thirty-one, and resolution twenty dash one twenty-nine. What we're doing here is changing the general plan, changing the zoning, and a development agreement. And this particular piece of property is, as we said, on thirty-five hundred South, there's currently a car dealership there. There is a storage unit on the east side, homes on the south side, another business on the west side, and then across thirty-five hundred South is City Park, close to where our animal control shelter is. So this proposal would make changes to the zoning to allow, from C two, what it currently is, commercial to multiple-unit dwelling residential. Three point oh-seven acres. And I believe if I, well, I don't recall, but they were going to put in a number of units. Let's see. Just looking, oops, no, I got the wrong one.
I think it was a maximum of fifty.
That's right, fifty, yeah, that number rings a bell. I had gotten that correctly now. I don't know any other items we ought to mention in our introduction. This is the only exit, and exit and entrance to this is off of thirty-five hundred South. Units, they say, will be approximately the three hundred to four hundred thousand dollar range. And that's probably enough of an introduction. So if there's nothing else from the council, we will open the public comment portion of this. Is there anyone online for this, Nicole?
Yes, sir, we have the applicant, Russell Platt, present. Russell, you should be able to go ahead and speak now.
There, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we hear you just fine.
Yes. Well, thank you for having me on tonight's meeting. We're really excited about building another community in West Valley City. We've had nothing but great success with the two communities we've built so far. And I just wanted to say that last night, I was at our HOA board meeting, or our, or our Cobalt Landing Development. It is very similar to this one that we're going to be building. It was really fun to hear everybody say how proud and happy they are to have moved from Holiday, Cottonwood Heights, Salt Lake City, California, and Connecticut, amongst others. But my, my favorite one was someone from West Valley, and we were talking about, why did you move into this neighborhood? And she said, because I really wanted to move up. And that just popped the buttons off my shirt. And the number one reason why people are buying in our communities like that is because they love the privacy and the view of their roof decks. They're being used extensively. And the way that they've set them up is an outdoor space with a living area, with some shade devices, barbecues. We've also wired them for entertainments. You can have a television up there. Anyway, it's just, this is the kind of thing that I'd like to do again down the street here, across the street from City Park. So with that, I'll let you discuss the project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And Nicole, that, no one else has come online for that?
No, sir, there's no one else present.
Okay, thank you. Then we will close the public comment portion and come back to the council.
Yeah. Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Hune. I have some questions for staff. Looking to see if Steve Pastrick, who presented this last week, if he's available.
All right, Steve, you should be able to speak now.
Thank you.
My first question would be, we had quite a bit of discussion last week about the, I think they all relate to the development agreement, requiring a block wall instead of perhaps a vinyl fence along the back, and then why this application isn't just compliant with our new standards instead of asking for changes or exceptions there. And I'm wondering if staff has any additional information for tonight.
So the one thing I would add on the material, so you recall the, the applicant is requesting to do tile in lieu of doing brick or stone. One thing that he did provide is a picture of the, the type of tile that, that he would be using. And I, if, if the council's interested, I could show that as, just as a point of reference. But that was one, one additional point of information that he shared with me.
Any further discussion about the wall as opposed to a vinyl fence?
So I, I, after the council meeting, I emailed the applicant a summary of, of the issues that were discussed by the council and just to, you know, make him aware of your concerns. And to this point, the only thing I got additional information on was the tile. And I don't know if Mr. Platt has additional information, but I did make him aware of those concerns.
Where would we be if we approved the general plan change and the zoning change, but do not approve the development agreement?
So the, the ordinance actually requires for, for RM zoning, the ordinance requires that we have a development agreement. That's one of the, several years ago, the council put in place some criteria to determine whether property be eligible. And so a development agreement was one of those requirements. So my, my suggestion would be that if, if the council's looking at maybe making some changes to the development agreement, that we would table the zone change until those, those issues with the agreement will resolve.
And just for my part, you know, the tile versus other products, I was a little surprised tile isn't a masonry product. I don't know that it really makes a great deal of difference as long as it is durable and looks nice. I am concerned about the wall. That's my only comment.
Mayor, you done, Steve?
Yes.
Just my situation right now is that I'm able to vote, or what I'm supposed to do or not, or what I'm supposed to do. Can you give me instruction for this?
Okay, I didn't hear everything you said, Councilman Hune.
Oh, I, I just want you to, to know, you know, last time I said about my situation right now, I supposed to vote or I'm not vote, or what, what procedure you want me to do?
No. If you disclose that you have a conflict on this issue, that is public notice and people are aware. But the decision on whether you recuse yourself and not vote, or if you go ahead and vote either yes or no, is up to you. We're not required to not vote if we have a conflict, as long as we disclose it. And you are disclosing that conflict prior to the vote, so.
Right, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further comments?
I have one. Sorry, and I think if my memory serves me correctly, one of, at least one of the zoning commissioners had mentioned an option or had mentioned that it seemed, the plan seemed a little, or the floor plan seemed a little tight, and had mentioned that maybe an option of removing a couple of the units might open up the space a little bit. And I think from the minutes, it said that someone's going to check back on that. Has that discussion continued, or has that question been asked with either the developer or the staff?
Mayor, if you'd like, I can answer that question. Mayor, if you'd like, I can answer that question.
Yes.
So during the planning commission meeting, there was the option discussed of removing a couple of the units uh, just to provide additional open space. So it wasn't so much a, a function of the, the floor plan or this, the size of the units, but more just the amount of open space on the site. Ultimately, the, the motion ended up uh, being approved by keeping it at fifty, which is what the applicant proposed.
Thank you.
I think one of the questions that was at, or concerns raised by Councilwoman Lang last week was the height of the southernmost units, that they were maybe too high, would be looking into uh, the backyards of people living to the south. That was an issue that she raised and thought about if we reduce the height of those to two stories. That's of course, you know, I think a big, big issue for the developer. But uh, that's what I recall from the conversation. She's not here.
And uh, maybe Steve can remind us again that in the development agreement, uh, there were a couple of exceptions granted. One was the twenty percent requirement for brick or masonry. And there was a, seemed like there was another one.
Yes, the, the second exception had to do with the amount of garage frontage. So there, the units that are along the east side of the property have the garages in the front. And the code allows a maximum of sixty percent of the ground level be essentially garage door. And they're exceeding that by a few percentage points. And so they're, they're asking for exception, an exception on that uh, amount of garage door width.
Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate that. Do we want to address this tonight? Or do you want to uh, hold it till next week until we can put some of those items in place? And uh,
Mayor, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
I would move for approval of ordinance twenty dash thirty, which is the general plan change to high density residential.
Okay.
Second.
Property before us, any further comments? Hearing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Fatisamaneu?
Aye.
Councilman Beeler?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
No.
Motion passes by majority.
Thank you. Next, uh, we have on our agenda ordinance twenty dash, or excuse me, yeah, twenty dash thirty-one. This is the zoning change.
Move for approval of resolution twenty dash thirty-one.
Second.
I guess it's ordinance twenty dash thirty-one.
Yeah. Any further comments? Hearing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Beeler?
Aye.
Councilman Fatisamaneu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
No.
Motion passes by majority.
At least I'll be consistent, so. Next, we have uh, resolution twenty dash one twenty-nine. This is for the development agreement.
Mayor, I move for approval with, of resolution twenty dash one twenty-nine with the amendment that a masonry wall be required along the southern border rather than a vinyl fence.
Second.
Property before us, any further comments? Hearing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Fatisamaneu?
Aye.
Councilman Beeler?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
No.
Motion passes by majority.
Thank you.
We didn't get the Nordfeld's vote.
No, it was the Nordfeld. Sorry about that.
Yes.
Sorry.
Hmm, I'm not the only one. Oh, thank you, thank you. That skips things on my agenda. So that completes that item. Next, we're on to item eight. Uh, we have two items there. Uh, we're considering application S M I dash four dash twenty twenty uh, from Bahid Saadiqi. This is final plat, plat approval on uh, some property at forty-one sixty South, Sixtieth West. Uh, this piece of property is uh, a piece of ground, uh, I think behind a Maverick store on the north, just south of, it's just south of forty-one hundred South. There are homes to the west, a few homes, a small street of homes to the east. To the south is a church. This is a street that runs from Hunter High School out to Sixtieth West. Uh, there's just a small piece of ground there that will, my understanding, be converted into four residential units. And so uh, this proposal would move forward with that, with four lots. That's the introduction. If the council can add anything to that or any comments or motions?
I move for approval of application S M I four dash twenty twenty.
Second.
And any further comments, discussion? So hearing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Beeler?
Aye.
Councilman Fatisamaneu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we have uh, application S M I dash five twenty twenty filed by Ted Ditas. Final plat approval for the Panda Express uh, Valley Fair Mall subdivision located at thirty-seven thirteen South Constitutional Boulevard. This is a piece of ground on the mall property and is located east of the In-N-Out Burger. The parking lots for the mall, which is just to the northeast, are directly north and east of the piece of property. And to the south is uh, that strip mall, I think, is it a Vasa Fitness Center? And uh, then there's a piece of empty property there. And uh, so this would uh, be a development agreement for apparently the proposal is a Panda Express there. That is the proposal before us to the council.
As much as I would have loved to see a jack in the box in that space, I'm also a fan of Panda Express. I'm opposed to it. I would uh, move for approval of application S M I dash five dash twenty twenty.
Second.
Properly before us, any further comments? Hearing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Fatisamaneu?
Aye.
Councilman Beeler?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have item nine on our agenda. We have five uh, consent items there. Uh, they are resolutions twenty dash one thirty through one thirty-four. Now, there are three different types here. The first one is for vacation and release of a detention facility at thirty-eight seventy-one South sixty-four sixty West. Uh, with the development of that subdivision, uh, this is related to uh, stormwater runoff. Uh, other methods were found to be able to deal with that. And so the property will be reverted for uh, use as residential property. Then uh, the next three, one thirty-one, one thirty-two, and one thirty-three resolutions are all three uh, right away purchase, uh, a warrant, accepting a warranty deed, and temporary construction easement. And uh, two of them are on West Whitehall Drive. The third one is on Lee Maurer Street. These are in conjunction with the asphalt overlay project and the American Disabilities Act for modifying curb and gutter uh, sidewalk for uh, use of that in conjunction. We have to do that every time we do an asphalt overlay. Better, those are those three, and then one thirty-four is to ratify city manager's appointment of, I guess it's Cherie Bryant to the Professional Standards Review Board. Those are the items on the consent agenda to the council.
Mayor, I move for approval of the five items on the consent agenda.
Second.
For us, any further comment? Hearing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Beeler?
Aye.
Councilman Fatisamaneu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we do not have a need for a closed session, so that completes our business of our city council meeting tonight. So a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn is properly before us. Without objection, we will stand adjourned. Hearing no objection, it is unanimous. Thank you all for your work tonight. We'll uh, look forward to seeing you all again next week.
Thank you.
Thank you all. See you next week.
Thank you.